Another of our city council forums that John has so excellently put together. And this is from Ward Three, right John?
That's right. Ward Three, we've got Gwen Jones in studio. Why don't you say hi real quick Gwen?
Good morning, everyone.
And also over here sharing my mic right now is Ben Hart.
Hey, good morning Missoula.
Good morning.
And we'll give both of them a chance to kind of explain who they are and why they're running here in a second. And tell all of our listeners, now is a good time to call in. Every single council forum we've had, at the end of the show, the phone lines are full. People can't get in and people don't get their questions asked and people are upset. So now's a good time to call in. The number is 721-1290. We have one rule on forum days, and that is that you need to ask a question that both candidates can answer because the way we do it to try to be fair is to give each candidate a chance to respond to the same question. So go ahead and dial that number, it's 721-1290, and we'll start taking your questions. And if you don't, Peter and I will just come up with our own.
Yeah, we do. We do have our own. So let's start with Gwen. Gwen, if you wouldn't mind, just telling us a little bit about yourself and why you decided to run for the city council.
I would love to. Thank you. So thanks for having us here this morning, first of all. And thanks to Town Square Radio. They have been huge lacrosse supporters for the last few years.
Well, there you go.
As I've worked in youth lacrosse in Missoula, so thanks. And they also have, the management has excellent lacrosse players.
Yes, we do, yeah.
They're sons. Thank you for that talent here in Missoula. Anyway, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm an attorney. I'm 50 years old. I'm married to Andrew Konig, my husband, who's also an attorney, and we have a practice together, practicing law. We have three children. My oldest is a senior at Hellgate. My young, my middle child is, my daughter's a sophomore at Hellgate, and my youngest is in seventh grade at Washington Middle School. I originally grew up in Ward Three. I left for college because back in 1983, there were hardly any jobs in Missoula and a lot of people left. So I'm so grateful that we have a more diverse economy here now, although we need to continue improving that area. I moved back with my family about 11 years ago because I told my husband, we need to raise our kids in Missoula, Montana, because frankly, it's an awesome place to raise kids. In terms of going into city government with city council, the reason why I originally went to law school was to be in city government. Life happens. I went into litigation. But the last two years, I have been on the neighborhood council, and this is a great match for me at this point to take my expertise as an attorney, and the last 10 years, having done a lot of volunteer work in the community in Missoula, and take those skills and bring them to the council.
Okay, Ben?
Hey there.
This is Ben Hart, so go ahead.
So I have been in Missoula since 1998. I am an alumni, University of Montana, class of 2001. I formerly owned Pangaea Expeditions, which is a whitewater rafting company on the Alberton Gorge. And kind of concurrent with that, I was a fly fishing guide in the Missoula area for about 10 years. For the last eight or so years, I've been working for a Fortune 400 company, Mohawk Industries, as a sales territory manager. Kind of gives me the unique opportunity to work with business owners, both in Missoula and all across Montana. So I think I became interested in running for city council through watching what's happened around Missoula and really thinking that we're not on a, an appropriate fiscal path, I guess. I'm trying to bring a more fiscally conservative viewpoint to the city council and honestly, a dissenting voice of reason. And I think I'm a pretty reasonable person, so for me to think that my viewpoints are dissenting, I think that we have gotten far too progressive in financial matters. Now, completely socially liberal, but that's, that's why I'm running for city council.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I guess that maybe sets up the first question. So for both of you, if you were to give the current city council a letter grade, what would you give it and why?
Ben, you go first.
Uh, C minus?
Why, why a C minus, Ben?
I think that the city council right now is focused entirely on a lot of things that they shouldn't be, frankly, while not addressing the problems that I see as being real, real problems that are addressable and fixable right now. You know, this, this recent development about firearms transactions, for one, is something I don't, I don't think city council has any business in. I think it's going to get the city of Missoula sued. And I don't see it as, as having a meaningful difference to our lives here.
Okay, so Gwen, letter grade for the council and why?
I would give the council a B plus. I think in general, they are going in the right direction. And when I look at the last couple of years, something that I would have been, done differently would have been setting different expectations for the Mountain Water acquisition as an attorney. I know that litigation is always far more painful than you ever anticipate it's going to be.
And more expensive, right?
Exactly. Money equals pain when it's, when it's going down the hole like that. But I totally support the Mountain Water acquisition, but I think in terms of litigation, there has to be a great deal of education, setting the correct expectations as to how hard it's going to be and what it's going to cost in the long run. And that would have been good to do hindsight 2020. But I think in general, the council is doing a good job, and I do think the investments they're making in Missoula these days are going to pay off in the long run.
We have Gwen Jones and Ben Hart, both vying for the open seat in Ward Three on the Missoula City Council. So in lieu of callers, 721-1290, hint, hint. John, what's, what's your question?
Well, I do have a question before we get there, real quick. Gwen, can you describe where Ward Three is?
Sure. Ward Three is the university district neighborhood, riverfront neighborhood and Rose Park neighborhood. The boundaries are basically from the river to within a couple of blocks of Washington Middle School, and then it cuts over to Mount Sentinel. I think Woodworth is the cut over line to Mount Sentinel, from Higgins to Mount Sentinel, and it's from Russell all the way to Mount Sentinel. So it's about 14,000 voters in that area.
Okay, the next question I'm about to ask, I get unsatisfactory answers, at least for me, from both sides. So we are in the middle of the water trial, right? And when I ask people what we should do now, where we should go, the question that I have for you is, how much money would be too much to invest in the water system? Is there even a ceiling for anybody on city council is part of the question? The other question is, if you're opposed to the water system, which I think Ben is, if you're opposed to the water system, what would you advise we do now that we've already invested so much money into this lawsuit?
There were five million in, so, so. Gwen, go ahead.
Okay, I'd love to answer this question. And I have to give a little background first. I went to law school. I took a lot of water law and natural resources law while I was in law school, and so I truly appreciate how water is our liquid gold in the American West. And there's not going to be more water, there's going to be less, and as with our climate change, we're going to have hotter summers. So this is a finite resource that is going to continue becoming more rare. And I totally support acquisition of Mountain Water because having a private corporation whose primary obligation is to put money into the pockets of its shareholders is not the right motivation. It's basically a monopoly that's been set up. So I think we, if it was a nonprofit, that would be fine, but it's not. We need to have the water system in the hands of Missoulians, where our best interests are being looked after and the water infrastructure is being looked after. In terms of how much is going to be too much, it's a hard question to answer. And I think everyone is waiting to see what the valuation is put on it.
Well, we're talking about just the money that we've spent so far, which is over $5 million.
Was well spent.
So.
And litigation is expensive.
Okay.
Welcome to the world, that's the way it is. But we have to get this. In the 1980s, we tried to get it, we were unsuccessful. I was just at a continuing education class for my legal, my, my Montana bar, and we spent an hour going over the decision issued by Judge Townsend, and she set it up very well. So I think it's very strong in appeal. So this is an investment, and we have to do it.
So basically, no price is too high, is what I'm getting from that answer.
You know, I'm anticipating it's going to come in certainly less than 200 million, okay? If it was 250 million, possibly too much. I don't know, I can't, I can't put a number on it at this point to sit down, but I'm hoping it's less than 100 million, down into the 50 to 65 million range, and we make it work.
Well, that was the number that was leaked, was 200 million, right?
But that's a number that includes other utilities also.
Okay, alright.
So it's, it's all complicated. Yep.
Ben, go ahead.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought, I recall reading that $86 million was where we were, we were capped out. Where we were tapped out, that's the most we could pay. Now, would I have initiated this fight? Absolutely not. I'm running for city council to elect, or to represent ratepayers. And I honestly think this is going to be a bad deal for Missoulians. Now that we're in the fight, do I support it? Support us winning? I don't have a choice. I mean, I think it's kind of like when your country goes to war, you can't, you can't do anything but hope that we win. So yeah, is it a good idea? Is it a nice idea that we own the, the water company, the utility? Yes, it's a great idea, but would I have gone about it this way? What it, what it's been predicated on? Absolutely not.
So do you, do you think that there would have been a better way aside from eminent domain?
Well, all of this seems to be predicated on this, this backdoor deal with a wink and a handshake that isn't written on paper anywhere. I mean, a better way, I guess, would have been to have that if, if we were going to go and endorse their acquisition of this company based on our, our future ownership of it. I feel like that's something that could have saved us $5 million at this point.
Okay, Gwen, eminent domain, would there have been a better way, a more, less combative way to do this than through eminent domain?
Well, you either buy it through an agreement and a contract, or you do eminent domain. Those are the options. So I think it would have been great if they had truly entertained our offer, Carlisle Group, but they didn't. So there's some issues there. Had they not, had we not come to a meeting of the minds and had a contract, then eminent domain is the next, the next step in the procedure.
Okay, so strap on the headphones, because we do have a call. So let's get Leroy on the line. Leroy, first of all, thank you for holding. You're on with Ben Hart and Gwen Jones. Go ahead. What's your question?
Hey, good morning. Thanks for taking my call. Just, just my question is going to be related to, I've been to quite a few city council meetings, and I've been in there, the naked bike ride is one of them, but you know, we had over 200 people that were protesting against that thing. And it seems to me, and you know, I'm a resident of Missoula all my life, and the city council is just taking over, going against the will of the people on many things, including the water project, including the naked bike ride, including the Shriners, you know, the circus, animals.
Exotic animals, Ben, yeah.
And my question is, what are you going to do about, you know, going with the will of the people instead of the will of city council? And the last thing I want to see is another fast-talking lawyer that was going to spend a lot of money, and they don't care how much it is, no, no amount. That's the way life is. That's not the way life is. We have a lot of problems, homeless and people that are hungry in Missoula. We can use that money much, much smarter. What are you going to do about those kinds of things, the city council running amok in our city?
Okay, thanks Leroy. So I'm going to give you a chance first to, you fast-talking lawyer, you?
Thank you for calling in Leroy, I appreciate it. As an attorney, actually, I do think I bring a lot of good skills to the council, but setting that aside for right now, frankly, I was not a big fan of the naked bike ride. I thought it was kind of more of an attention getter than anything constructive, so.
That was silly as well, wasn't it?
But what's done is done at this point. Here we are. We haven't talked about any of the social issues yet on this program, but I think they're very important. I think, I think affordable housing, Pavarello Center, Food Bank, these are all very important. Missoula Aging Service, these are very important things in Missoula. And you know, right now, there are homeless children in every single school in Missoula. No matter what neighborhood it's in, there are homeless children. So I'm very well aware of these social issues that we do need to go forward on. Some of these other issues that have come up recently are a little bit more high profile. They're attention, well, they're, they're headliners, I should put it that way. But what I'm doing is, I'm talking to people in Ward Three, the university district, Rose Park, riverfront neighborhoods. I go to neighborhood council meetings, I talk to people, I know a lot of people. I grew up in this town also. I think every ward has a different, unique personality. But what I'm doing at this point is doing the best I can to find out what people in Ward Three want, and to figure out how we can affect that on the council. And a lot of them, I have to say, are in favor of many of the things the council has been doing for the last few years.
Gwen Jones, Ben Hart, joining us here in studio, candidates for city council on Ward Three. Now, Ben, it's your turn to, to answer the question about, that Leroy had about, the city council seemed to be delving into issues where, in his view, they have no purview.
Sure. I, I think Leroy mentioned the, the will of the people, and, and I do agree to an extent with Leroy that I, I think city council perhaps is representative of a much more fringe viewpoint, unfortunately. I think for too long, we've had that, that position in city council, and that's one of the big reasons why I'm running. So to answer your question, I want to listen to the people in Missoula, and particularly in Ward Three, and take their genuine concerns to city council and make change with them. Is that?
Okay, that's good. So we have a Facebook question.
Yeah, we got a question from Sue. She wants to know what your thoughts are about the Wool cases. This is Wool versus City of Missoula. It's the South Avenue case. For a brief history for the listeners who may not know, this case lost in court, the city then went to the Supreme Court. It's now lost there once or twice. Twice, and it's back there a third time.
Right.
And the city is trying to not pay attorney's fees for the second time they lost at the Supreme Court, I believe. So a lot of people feel like we're digging and keep digging on this one. Just a response on that, what are your thoughts?
I, I think we need to just put this thing to bed. I think the city was in the wrong in taking the property, and I don't know why we are continuing to fight with people over this.
Okay, Gwen?
I would agree in general with that. I haven't had a chance to sit down and read through all of the documents in the case to really know exactly where it's at at this point, but it has gone on for a long time. And at some point, the handwriting is on the wall, and you need to move forward, cut your losses, because time is money in litigation.
Pay up, right? Yeah, yeah. So go ahead.
A question that was referred to earlier by comment Gwen made about the social issues. So one of the questions that's been a hot topic on this program has been the issue of affordable housing. You had mentioned homelessness earlier, and part of the cure for homelessness is making home affordable, right? So if you guys could talk about housing in Missoula, what do you think the biggest struggles are, some of the opportunities that we're missing out on perhaps?
Gwen, you go first.
Great, I would love to talk to this. The way I see it, Missoula is heading into a big period of growth. There's going to be, the estimates are 20,000 more people coming into Missoula over the next 20 years. What that means is, we're going to be building a lot more, they have to live somewhere. We have a new growth policy that is addressing all of this, but there's also going to be more demand for affordable housing. The numbers are going up. So we need to figure out what we're doing. We've got a new growth policy. I think it's probably a good time to sit down and come up with having the major players and parties come together in Missoula and talk about affordable housing and touch base on that. Because with affordable housing, you can either, you can regulate it, or you can create incentives. Incentives are grants, assistance to builders, so they're building affordable housing units. Or you can regulate it through impact fees, where developers pay a little bit of money each time they build something, and that goes towards affordable housing. Or there can be inclusionary zoning. Each time they build something, there's some units within it that are dedicated to affordable housing. So I think it's time, as a community, to sit down and figure out what's the best fit for our culture? Where are we going to get the most buy-in and the most mandate from the people in this town? And do our best to continue to provide affordable housing. As I said, there's homeless children in every single school. As long as that's going on, this is an issue Missoula needs to handle.
Okay, Ben?
I probably have a different view somewhat on the issue of affordable housing. I mean, I think we've come a long way. We have just a ton of inventory that's come on the market here over the last six months or a year, and continuing to build more. I don't think that there's a bureaucratic solution to affordable housing. I mean, look at San Francisco and, and what the bureaucratic solution has done there. I honestly think the real solution for Missoula is to create careers here, not just jobs. And I think city council has been far too focused on creating jobs. We have welcomed retail monoliths over the last couple of years that provide so little to us as far as, you know, they offer part-time, low-wage employment. And instead of giving up our tax base for part-time employers, I think we'd be better served giving up some tax base for real businesses that are going to create real careers, not just jobs.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you. Go ahead, John, we have a Facebook comment.
Yeah, this is a question from Rick. He says, quote, "I grew up in Ward Three." Oh, by the way, Facebook posters, we're only taking questions that both candidates can answer. I know a lot of people have called out candidates for things that they have said on Facebook, and candidates, I would maybe lead you to go read the Facebook page where people are trying to dialogue with you, but maybe we'll do that on a different day. But Rick says, quote, "I grew up in Ward Three and currently own a piece of property there. The biggest difference I have noticed since the 80s is the amount of vehicle congestion. There are constant rumors of taking Fifth and Sixth Street and shrinking them into a single lane and drawing bike lanes. In my opinion, this will congest vehicle traffic further into residential neighborhoods and damage the quality of life and property values. What are your views on shrinking the streets, in particular, these two streets in the ward?"
Okay, you first, Brad.
Well, I used to live on South Fourth West, just outside of Ward Three. And you know, I guess I have heard whispers of, of shrinking those streets, but nothing, certainly nothing concrete that we've talked about. You know, I, I think the current city council would, would like to outlaw cars and just make everyone walk or ride bikes. But the, the fact of the matter is, we do need a transportation system that works for all Missoulians. And I'd be in favor of leaving those streets the way they are, I guess.
Okay, Gwen?
We're going to have to choose to disagree on this. I appreciate the question. This is an issue in Ward Three that affects a lot of people. I drive Fifth and Sixth all the time, and for the last six months, I've really been trying to pay attention to how much traffic is on those streets. And I know there's some concern with neighbors about parking. For the most part, parking would not be impacted by this. It would go from two lanes down to one lane, from Russell to Higgins. But on the other side of Russell and on the other side of Higgins, it's going to remain two lanes. The proposal is to go down to one lane so that there is a bigger bike lane. And frankly, the biggest issue is the fact that there's tons of kids that walk and ride bikes to schools, because we have big school districts now. And the issue is, when you have two lanes, one car stops, a kid starts to try and cross, they don't see there's a blind spot, and the second car comes up in the second lane, and that's when you have an accident. And I think it's totally worth it going down to one lane, having extra bike lanes, and not having a bad accident involving a kid.
Let's get to the phone lines, which are finally full. We appreciate your calls. Candy, you're up first. You're, you're on with Gwen Jones and Ben Hart. Hi.
Yes, I wanted to ask them how they see the specialistic taxing funds that have been given to the South Gate, well, approved to the South Gate Mall for, because they're using taxpayers' dollars to support a for-profit situation. I was wondering about that in conjunction with also funding a bridge to nowhere over Reserve Street. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. So Ben, you're up first.
Candy, just like Alaska, we're looking to have our bridge to nowhere here in Missoula. Let me talk about the, the tax increment funding here at South Gate Mall. I think that it's a terrible misuse of, of TIF money, and honestly, it reeks of a kind of cronyism that is usually reserved for the other end of the political spectrum. I think it's a terrible deal for Missoula, and a terrible deal for taxpayers who are ultimately going to pick up the tab for increasing the services to this area. 100% against giving money to Peter Lambros and South Gate Mall.
Okay, Gwen?
Well, the good news is, Ward Three is definitely going to have a choice in this election, because we're going to have to agree to disagree on this one also. All MRA money, for the most part, is intended to, when, when MRA money is used, it's usually in non-pro, it's usually in, I'm sorry, for-profit situations. It's intended to revitalize economic areas. So everybody loves our downtown now. That's because that was the first project the MRA worked on back in the early 90s, when the downtown had been lagging for a good decade and a half. And the MRA was created through legislation, through the state Montana legislature, and instituted in Missoula. So MRA funds are the most wonderful way we have in Missoula of paying it forward, and not having a huge tax burden, but creating more of a tax base in the long run, so that five, 10, 15 years later, when South Gate Mall has doubled their tax base, MRA funds have been paid off, the coffers in Missoula are going to be doing much better. So I do think the MRA is an excellent institution in Missoula.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, what's that?
I totally disagree. I mean, I think you, this is more of Missoula welcoming retail monoliths, multinational corporations to come here and offer some low-wage, part-time, 30-hour-a-week work. It's not in the spirit of Missoula, and terrible.
Well, I would have to disagree on that, because approximately 50% of the stores out at South Gate Mall are locally owned, be they franchise or simply a private store. And every store has a manager. And then there are lower-paying retail wages beneath that, but this is not just a gigantic Walmart.
We should use that money to create more than retail opportunities.
And I would love to talk about business economics in Missoula. Should we just go onto that topic, or?
Well, let's get our callers on it.
Okay.
Want to be fair to them. We appreciate both of you wanting to duke it out here. That's great. Catherine, you're, you're on Talk Back. Hi.
Okay, sounds like you can get some good discussions going there. Okay, I wanted to ask them about annexation. There's long-term plans to annex East Missoula and Upper Rouse Lake has already gone through some fights about that, too. Orchard Homes Target Range, you know, surrounding areas, where do you, either of you stand on annexation?
Okay, thanks Catherine. Gwen?
I'm going to say right up front, this is not an area that I have a ton of knowledge in, and it doesn't affect Ward Three as much, because Ward Three is all completely within city limits. But in the last, I'm not sure, five, 10, 15 years, the city limits have grown, and now there are more city residents than county, which is reversed from what it used to be. So this is a growing trend that we're seeing. And my understanding is, more often than not, annexation is tied to going on to, is tied to going on to the sewer system. Beyond that, I can't really give more, more of an opinion on if it's good or if it's bad, or how we should pursue it, but I can say this, the city of Missoula is growing, and it's going to continue to grow. And I think the more infrastructure we have laid in place so that this remains a beautiful, healthy place, the better.
Okay, Ben, Ben Hart, go ahead.
I, I do think we need to protect the river and the riparian area out beyond Reserve Street, Target Range. Do I think we can effectively bring services to everyone out there? I don't. You know, I, I honestly think in the long term, we're better looking east to East Missoula as an area that we can increase density, services, have a little sort of bedroom community as part of Missoula, but Target Range, no. I don't think that would be good for the people that live out there.
Pretty little politicking going on here. Of course, all politics is local. We like to keep it local if we can. Ward Three candidates Ben Hart and Gwen Jones are here from Ward Three, so let's get back to the phone and say good morning to Mike. Hi, you're on with our candidates. Go ahead.
Hi, I have a question for Gwen, but I'd like to set up my question first. I'm a bicycle rider, and I wanted to go back to that bicycle issue.
Hold on, real quick. Remember, it's got to be a question for both candidates, okay? Not just for Gwen.
Oh, for both of them? Okay.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Can you do that? Okay. Because Ben gets to go first this time, so go ahead.
Okay. She said that it's better to make all the streets in Missoula narrower.
I think she said Fifth and Sixth Streets.
Fifth and Sixth, yeah. The, the city council, she said, wants to make all the streets narrower. And I had a, one of the heads, the head guy that was head of the bicycle pedestrian thing that they've got going on here.
That's Ben Weiss.
Yes. Yes. He told me directly that, one time at a meeting, that they are trying to make all of the streets narrower, so that it slows down traffic, so that it encourages people to ride the bus, or ride their bicycle, or walk. And that's the reason they're doing it. Now, I'm a bicycle rider, and to me, it makes the streets more dangerous when you narrow them, because you're putting the bicycles and the cars closer together. My question is, for both candidates, is, are you willing to look at this side of that issue? And if not, are, are you, do you just have your mind made up?
Okay. Thanks for the call, Mike. So Ben, you're up first. Go ahead.
Well, Mike, I ride my bike nearly everywhere in Missoula, and nearly every day. And I, at one point, worked for the ASUM Office of Transportation at the University of Montana. And it's an issue that's pretty near and dear to me. As far as narrowing the roads and bike safety, you know, I don't know, that's something I need to think about. But I'll tell you what I think the number one thing we need to do for bicycle safety in this town. We need to enforce some of the laws that we already have, and we need to work on outreach, whether it's with signs or, or ticketing people. Because, you know, we have people like myself who follow traffic laws, ride their bike in the bike lane. And we have a tremendous amount of people riding on the wrong side of the street, on the sidewalk, popping off the curb across the intersection. And I really think helping the flow, helping cyclists to know what the laws are, how they're supposed to ride their bike, would go a lot farther to keeping all traffic in Missoula moving better.
What do you think, Gwen?
I think that was very well put, and I totally agree with what Ben said. Bike safety is my priority. And, and let me just clarify, I'm not saying that all of the streets in Missoula should be made narrower for bike lanes. We were simply discussing Fifth and Sixth, and the street itself will not be made narrower. Instead, there will be more room for bike lanes, and the lanes for cars will go from two down to one. But I think bike safety is huge. You know, if there's an altercation between a car and a bike, bicyclist, bicyclist is one that's going to come out losing. So they need to be safe bike lanes. And I totally agree, Ward Three has a ton of bike riders, and there are people blowing through stop signs left and right. I'm not with my car, because I'm a car, following the, following the rules of the road. But as, if everyone got on the same page, it would make for a much better scenario.
How long may I ask both of you, real quickly? I don't ride a bike, because I live up in Upper Miller Creek, and it would take forever. So I don't ride a bike. So, but, so I am dealing with bike riders, you know, who, who I, who I try to share the road with. But, but I'm relatively ignorant about this. Are bike riders, especially adults, are they required to be licensed? Are they required to have a bike license?
I don't think so.
Because the one thing that I have never seen, in all my years of living in Missoula, is a bicyclist being pulled over and given a ticket. I've never seen it happen.
I haven't seen it here, but it does happen in some places. Now, maybe it should happen here, a little bit more. A couple of things I want to add to bike safety and bike transportation. One thing I think that we have to fix, and all the cyclists in Missoula will probably agree, the expansion gaps on the Higgins Street Bridge are, are brutal on cycles. You know, metal plate, some, some engineering fixed over those expansion gaps to make it safer and easier on bicycles. And I also really feel like making the one ways downtown two ways is going to help our, our bike transportation a lot. I like the idea of being able to go north on Higgins across the bridge and make a left on a, on a bicycle. And we don't have that now.
Okay, Gwen, go ahead.
Yeah, I would add, I've personally never seen a police officer giving a bicyclist a ticket. But I do have a neighbor who rides his bike everywhere, and he always wears his bright yellow jacket, and he's really into biking. And he has gotten two tickets. So it does happen somehow, some way. And I agree, I think, I don't let my kids ride their bikes. When we were, they were little, we would not go over Higgins Street Bridge, because it's just not a safe scenario for bicyclists at all. And I think it
Unless you're naked.
Hey, I'm not going there.
It's closed for the day.
Right. I'd love to see Higgins reconfigured to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists in more safety.
When I was seven, Peter, there was an urban legend that a kid got pulled over for speeding on the highway on his bicycle. So I don't know if it's true or not. Still wondering to this.
Marilyn, you are up with our candidates, Gwen Jones and Ben Hart. Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to know if they know what socialism is. Can they define it?
Okay, thanks for the call, Marilyn. So I guess, Gwen, you're up first.
Okay. Well, I would describe socialism as the form of government and economic system currently used in some European countries, most notably the Scandinavian countries, where there's high taxes, and in return, the government pays for a huge amount of services. I think the United States is far from being a socialist country, if that's the underlying intent of the question. I think we are certainly not a socialist country. But on the other hand, we're not in the developing world either. We are at a state where we invest in our community, and we do provide social services to some extent. So I guess that's what I would say.
Okay. Ben, what do you think?
I think that's a fine, fair definition of socialism. I mean, I think socialism is taking resources from all levels of people and redistributing them to, to everyone. And obviously, you know, some degree of socialism is, is necessary, so we can have functioning streets that are plowed and everything else. I don't know what the, the underlying intent of the question is either. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay. A question for, for both of you. When it comes to city government, do you feel that government is putting money towards things that it shouldn't in any way? Is there a way to save money, if you were to get to city council, that you would suggest that city start to scroll back on? Ben, you first.
Yeah, I would suggest that we stop taking on these feel-good, progressive issues that don't really lead to much of anything and end up getting us sued. I know Bozeman is in a lawsuit right now over their, their equality ordinance. And of course, we're always talking about those sorts of things, too. You know, I think that, that's something that's probably best left to the federal government. And again, with this, this gun transfer thing, more progressive, feel-good legislation that I don't think is enforceable. And I, I think it almost certainly is going to lead to a lawsuit costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars that frankly, I, I don't think we have.
Okay. So Gwen, what, what kind of things do you think city council should back away from?
Well, in terms of the budget, my, my impression, having spent months educating myself on many issues, and there's certainly a lot more to go, there are so many things that we could be spending money on, and we only have so much money. So it's not a question of what do we cut off. It's a question of making the best decisions possible and prioritizing. And what I see coming down the road is, if the school bond passes, that's not a city council issue. But that money will be coming from the same pockets that city taxes come from. So I'm totally in favor of the school bond. I really hope it passes. But if it passes, I think city council will need to be all the more pragmatic and sensitive to taxpayers' pockets, because they're all coming from the same, it's all coming from the same place.
Okay, go ahead.
Real quick, easy question from Mitch. He wants to know, how would you have voted on the elephant and gun issue? By elephant issue, I think he's referring to the exotic animal ordinance, okay? For both of you.
Gwen, you go, go ahead.
I would have voted the same way. I think they did the right thing. And I know the Shriners have done incredible work over the years, and this is their big fundraiser. And it's been a tradition. But I also think the culture in America is changing. And sometimes you have to rework things and come up with some new fundraisers. So I, I think it's the right thing to have done, because there are many communities that are going in this direction in America at this point. I'm a huge animal lover. We have animals at Horror House. I, I think it's the right direction to go in.
Okay, Ben?
I would have voted, obviously, against the, the gun transfer issue. I, I don't think it's going to be, I, I don't know that there's anyone who's actually going to do these transfers. It's going to hurt the gun show. I don't think it's going to solve the, the greater problem, if we, which we don't even really seem to have here. Now, go ahead.
Real quick, I would like you to respond to the gun issue as well. That was part of the question, and then we'll get you on the animals, okay? So Gwen, to the guns.
Okay, gun issue. Having read through all of the proposals for the gun issue, this is totally within the capability of city council to articulate a policy that any type of gun transfer, there should be a, there should be a background check. The way I look at it is, is this going to have a huge impact on gun transfers in the state of Montana? No. It's simply within the city limits. But it's a policy statement saying, this is the way it should run from here on out. And sometimes, change comes from the bottom up. I think we need to have some changes in our gun culture. When the Second Amendment is here, this is fine. But if something ever happened in Missoula, I mean, bad things happen in all sorts of communities across the country, where people go into, you know, Columbine, this sort of thing. If anything ever happened in Missoula, I would want to know that, you know, we, as a community, at least did what we could on our watch. And will the gun show possibly have to change how transactions work? Yes, the gun show is a great addition to Missoula. It's very popular. But possibly a transaction is started at the gun show, and then it's completed later on.
I know you want to respond on guns, but let's get your point on the exotic animals, and then you can go back to guns.
I agree with the exotic animals. And I think, I think most, most people should. I'm sorry to the Shriners, and I, I'm sure that they can go on and successfully hold their circus. But I don't, I don't feel like those animals should be kept in that way anywhere in our country. And I do, I do think it's, that's a good example, and it's something we can change. So.
So to the guns.
To the guns.
We have two minutes. You wanted to respond to her? Okay. We only have two minutes. So if you want to do a quick closing statement and a response, you're fine.
You know, I, I probably wouldn't earn the highest score that the NRA would give. I, I mean, I, I do feel like we need to regulate guns. And I, I think we need to address mental health. And this is really more of a state issue. But we, we are so lacking in Montana at addressing mental health issues here. As, you know, our, our right to have guns is protected by the Constitution. And I don't think city council has any business meddling in that. And, and that's my position on it.
Okay, we have one minute. So if you could just give a one-minute wrap-up. Gwen?
I appreciate the opportunity to come here today. I think you've heard a lot of my thoughts on policies. I am a very pragmatic person, too. I'm driving a 1999 minivan with 180,000 miles on it. So I don't have any problem making priority decisions in terms of budgeting, if need be. But in general, I'm progressive and want to continue to make Missoula a good place.
Okay, you have about 50 seconds. Go.
I, too, would like to make Missoula a good place to live. I mean, I want to watch Missoula grow, yet continue to be the kind of place that people actually want to live. You know, I think that even progressive-minded people in Missoula are a little bit disenchanted right now. And if that's you, I would encourage you to, to get out there and vote for some of the more fiscally conservative, yet still socially liberal candidates like myself that are in this election. I do think we need, we need to get away from this sort of hand-picked cast of characters on city council. So thanks for your time, Missoula.
Gwen and Ben, thank you for being with us. We appreciate it. Tomorrow, it's going to be open phones. We're only on from nine to 10, following Hunter's Breakfast. So you guys have a great day, and we'll have another one of these forums as soon as possible.